Investigate everything and then Richard will give me a report. Where this leak is originated. We're not going to answer anybody's blowing. It is a common area.
Okay, do they store stuff? Do people store? Do people legally store stuff? Is there a separate storage area that's locked off?
There's a storage area at one end of the commons and we have a storage area in the back.
Okay, and they're all locked or whatever? Are they locked up?
The storage areas, yes.
For each unit or whatever?
Yes, and let me, you touched on something. The buildings are not private.
Right.
Because we don't lock the front door.
Okay.
They're public. The only thing private on that property.
Is the entrance to the.
Is the driveway because we maintain the truck. The town doesn't plow it.
Okay.
The town doesn't resurface it. We do.
Okay.
Okay, it is also public because it's state of Vermont. We have to answer to them once a month for septic and water. So once again, I'm asking the board is could you please give Richard the okay to come with me and go into the crawl space? Unless I can answer any other questions for anybody?
No, I'm just not sure why you would need our permission.
Because he told me.
That he wants. That he wants.
Really?
He wants to select for it to tell him. Okay.
I guess there was something that happened not with me or the commons that he feels much better if.
There's, okay, someone cover his back. I get it.
And once again, that's the only thing. I'm not going to ask you to get the constable involved. I'm not going to ask you to render the place uninhabitable like we had to do with Dale's unit. And thank God you guys helped us there. We can render it uninhabitable through our docs and our bylaws. And so the only thing, once again, and I hate harping on it, is just give Richard the okay so we can complete this.
Okay, do you want that today or can we decide on the next meeting or?
No, I'll do it now. Okay. I'll make a motion that Dick Valentinetti is allowed to go in with Angelo and inspect the property.
The crawl space.
The crawl space.
Second.
And thank you. Any more discussion about that? And I'll tell you what, Sasha, I won't take this chair home.
We have to vote for it, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate your time, Angelo. Thanks so much.
Always a pleasure, Joe.
And the meatballs, we won't consider those bribed at all. Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? I haven't seen you in shots.
Robbie Campbell.
I was up there the other day. I was up there the other day. I must have gotten.
Oh, I was home. I'll be here for the next three. I sell Red Baron Tomis and Perchetta Pizza.
Oh.
That looks like one of them.
Yeah.
And I'll let you know when I make a plan for it and meatballs.
Yeah. We can use it as a towel.
Hey.
All right.
Michelle, you here for?
I am.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so Morfest is this Saturday. I'm here to see if anyone would like to be a judge in the cookie baked off. And for an answer, it's a little different this year. There are six categories. There's one judge per category, so you wouldn't have to taste all the cookies. Just cookies in your category, although you could if you wanted. There's extra, I'm sure.
Do you want to?
You could, you could taste whatever cookies look good. And then, so the judging would just be from 6:00 to 6:30. And then each judge picks a winner of that category. And then Sarah Oger from Goose Chase Cake Design will choose an overall winner from the six winners.
How many cookies in each group, do you think?
Don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the categories are classic cookies, distinctive flavors, decorated delights, bar cookie gliss, nutty twist, and fall favorites. Who's interested?
Besides me.
What category would you like?
Oh. I have to choose a category.
You get to.
Read it, read them again.
Classic cookies, distinctive flavors, which is like anything other than classic cookies, decorated delights like bar cookies, things with nuts in them, and then fall favorites. We'll try and make the categories as even as possible.
Yeah, I'll try the fall favorites.
Fall favorites. What would you like?
Anything but bars.
You can. Anything else?
You throw me anywhere.
Okay. Um, distinctive flavors, we think it sounds wonderful.
I can't, but I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. I'll stick Tom and classic cookies.
Vomiting him?
What?
Vomiting him?
He already, he already agreed to do it. Um, when it was cakes.
Six to 6:30, eh?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to sleep on it and let you know tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. What's the first one? Classics or something?
Classics, which I put Tom in, but I can take him out. He's not here. He's not here. I can take him right out.
Tom. I might go for the classics. Let me make sure.
I'm gonna.
I'm gonna have someone cover my tables that I've involved.
Yeah, and the other thing too, since it's just one judge per person, if you want to bring a friend in to like help you, because there's, there's, it's just you making the decision, go for it.
So like I could get Lee's to help me or something?
You could, yeah. If you want to split up, if you want to, but you're, you're the person picking.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Um, so then I'll put Tom in bar cookies.
So you still need three more?
Two more.
Oh, okay.
I'm leaving free area for you, so I don't think I can help everyone.
Isn't Dr. Mike?
I'm gonna, I'll reach out to him. I'd just like to ask the slipper first.
Okay.
Yeah, and then go branch out to other town.
Right, so like.
Um, so that'd be fun. There's a nice prize back.
Six to 6:30.
Six to 6:30. It shouldn't take long because all the cookies will get put into different categories, you know, and there's no real criteria because it's not like cakes where, you know, it's, it's really a judgment call, to be honest. Like some people like crunchy, some people like chewy.
Chewy.
There's no criteria, it's just what you like. So Sarah, as like the professional baker, she'll choose the, you know.
She'll be a tall Hollywood.
She's.
To make problems or something.
So the category winners get a wooden spoon that's burr. It's got Morfest on it, you know, like a wood burn like last year. And then the overall winner gets a Morfest Bakers Battle apron and a hot pot that Staples Stitchery designed and a gift certificate to Goose Chase Cake Design and some other little goodies.
Nice.
So if you're not a judge or feel free to enter. And if you are a judge, feel free to enter a different category.
I know, I gave this one.
That's all I had. The other thing we wanted to challenge you, by the way, is to try and come up with a cookie even though it's not his specialty. I, you know what? I'm sure it will be unbelievable and he'll.
You can't, you know, you can't.
Very good. I'm saying make him a judge, right?
I should.
Make him a judge.
You should.
Um, we, we had a meeting yesterday and we talked about weather, so we're not expecting. It's a beautiful week. There is some weather forecasted for Saturday. We're not expecting it to be terrible, but you know, based on the summer that we've had, did you have any thoughts about at what point we should call it if it gets concerning? Stefan's gonna get, he's getting a weather report from the National Weather Service on Wednesday.
Yeah, right now it's saying 50% chance.
Yeah, we don't, it, I'm sure it's.
I know.
Fine, just in case. We thought we should have some sort of plan.
When would you?
Lightning or like torrential rain or inter flooding.
Yeah, it's hard to know with thunderstorms, so.
Yeah, but if you get like a huge downpour for five minutes and then it's done, then, I mean, definitely like thunder or lightning, I would say. Because it's.
Now they've moved it to 60%.
If the National Weather Service report looks concerning, we'll forward it to Sasha who can forward it. She's like, he gets a, like he can request an official one, so we'll see what that.
Oh, okay.
So we'll see what that.
What would you think? Probably by noon you'd have to get it out there?
They'd have to put it out to, you know, the radio and all of our.
So Front Porch Forum doesn't come out until the afternoon, right?
It's sporadic.
Yeah.
Wonder how you can.
I'm happy to use our library social media.
Oh, good. Okay. Yeah, we're not, we're not expecting that to happen, but just in case.
Yeah, no, it's good to have, you know, a plan.
And then the very last thing is we're gonna write up some, because Morfest has gotten bigger every year. This year after the event, we're gonna write up some policies and whatnot, and then we'll run them by you just so we have a guideline to the law.
Okay. Good, yeah.
And that's it, unless you have any questions for me?
No, I think there's, no, a lot of people are excited about it, I think.
It's great.
Yeah.
Those, the Friends of the Library are all mac and cheese this year. The pig roast, Mr. Dana Lane will be there, all the vendors from last year. Good.
If I can volunteer and let Sasha know.
Awesome.
I'll be there anyway.
I mean, volunteer to be a judge or?
To be a judge, yeah.
Yeah. Or a general, but, yeah.
Yeah, no pressure though, you know. If not, if you don't, you know, roll through, try a cookie. Yeah, you can do it unofficially.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Cool. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thanks for your, thanks for getting on the road for me, doing that.
Okay. Cory?
I'm here for old business.
Yeah, she's here. She's here.
Oh, okay.
I forget to, I don't know, old business or communications.
Sounds good.
I figured it was gonna be a quick night, so that's why she's good. See how early her.
Okay, animal control ordinance.
I don't know, are we just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't the latest change was that if you don't have your dog on your property, you'd need to have a. Yeah, the one change was the taking out the lengthy thing about what is at large or whatever it was. And it's the same as whatever the definition was as before. If it's not on your personal property or public property, even it's roaming at large. But that was just making more insults and that was the attorney thing. Nothing else I think is fine. So I don't know if we moved that it goes against the town vote or is this just up to us to decide?
It's up to us.
Well, then I make a motion that we approve the new animal control ordinance as written.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah. Do you want me to sign?
Steph won't be happy about that. He was asking to stop on the road and asking me the other day. Just now he's got the right tickets and stuff like that. I finally corrected you on that. Wow. It's Stefan, not Stephon.
Yeah.
Stefan.
No, no.
I have, since I've met him, I've been saying Stephon, but Stefan. I probably pronounced it Stephon. Yeah, no, it's fine, but he's totally used to it, you know.
No, he gets.
He started sometimes I say that's all.
He's like me, I respond to anything but Kiki.
Okay. Kitty, how about Kitty?
Okay, let's go on to reports and communications and announcements. Sasha?
Um, Shirley will be working for you guys to look at the greater.
Oh, yeah.
She needs a motion so that she can start financing.
Uh, Northfield Savings Bank can offer 10, 12, or 15-year fixed rate of 5.35%. And Community Bank, we've ended up working with for most other things, um, 15 years at 4.93%.
15 years, that's, yeah.
And that's Shirley's recommendation. So I'll, I'll move that, uh, we approved a loan from Community Bank for $394,900 for 15 years at a rate of 4.93%.
Second motion.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 It's still on target to be delivered by, yeah, whose fault? Yeah, that's fault. I haven't heard any difference. I just want that with our own productions, so, yeah, that's great news. 15 years, trade. That's a loan approval, so let's.
Um, I'm not that tree.
Yes.
You will go ahead with the next bid?
Yes, I guess, so I guess we. Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with snapping turtles revised bid of taking the tree down for $2,500. And, um, you know, is it just leaving ads is I believe he'll remove the logs from the ditch. Leave them.
That was, they came back with this 25.
It was 3,000.
The 3,000.
Yeah. Yeah, that's about it.
The shit that you're selling.
Your second?
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? I take it you didn't have any luck with?
No, I called for a friend who was, he was careful. Which we aren't, no, but I couldn't get in with it. Cause I was a couple of days after the last meeting, you know?
All right, so all in favor of the motion for snapping turtle doing the treat for 2,500? Say aye.
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 I have an email, a lot of interest to be added to the recreation committee. I don't know what the name, I think it's, is it Seymour Tom Turnbull?
Oh, same work. Same work.
She has interest in joining and would like to be appointed.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think she has to come in.
No, I don't think so. You're looking her record. She's already been going to the meetings and stuff. I'm glad.
Everyone's looking at me like, I don't think she's married.
She's just married to the guy.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, no, she said it. You can't, she's gone to a couple of meetings.
No, I think it's great, okay? I'll make the motion then that, uh, appoint Seymour Turnbull to the recreation committee.
Second.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I have a couple warrants, a couple liquor licenses, and that fire protection for water that I sent you guys. Yeah. That's all I have.
Tom?
What's that?
What do you have?
Oh, you want, we're gonna go into the next.
Open this?
You know.
No, no, of course.
Oh, well, it's kind, well, it's a little, it's both really, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, so we're, uh, communication, and that's why Cory's here as well. We, um, met with Sam Lash from Central Vermont Regional Planning, who's one of the people heading up the whole thing about the market grants. And we, you know, it was very informative and we learned a lot about the big upcoming grant of $500,000 that we're gonna be applying for. It's gonna be sometime in October, November, or December.
January.
Oh, no, January. But also in the meantime, we filled out, we've filled out the paperwork or the, you know, online for the three buildings, our three buildings to be, have an energy survey.
Okay.
Which they're gonna do. But we also, as you might have heard or understand, we did get a grant for $4,000 that we now have. So when talking about that with Sam Lash and working with, uh, Dara, who's, you know, our energy. Who includes.
Yeah.
We are, so one piece of that is using some of those funds, and Cory will jump in and help me if I'm, you know, not getting all the details. Using some of those funds in conjunction with an event that we want to do at the town hall, which would be like an energy, the use.
Fair, at least.
Fair. That would show not only what we're talking about for energy upgrades in the town hall, but also would have information and an educational piece for people, what they can do in their home. And we would combine that with also showing people about what's going on at the town hall and we're working on having, you know, local folks, you know, in our community who can do food and maybe a wine tasting, you know, some local Motown musicians, just sort of an evening. Not an evening, it'd be from 4:00 to 7:00 at the town hall.
Yeah, like a reception.
Yeah, just, you know, like, hey, here's what we've been working on for the last three years type of thing. We can also, from talking with Sam, would use the grant monies, and this is the other piece of, you know, what we reviewed with her and what we thought we could do, is we need to do a topographical survey of the town hall, of, you know, in order to finalize, you know, the design, you know, some designs. We did include that in our, you know, our going into this design development phase. We've only, we've only approved just that next phase of the architect's work.
Correct.
So it is, I think, we, I got some proposals from three, three different survey companies. Well, only two, the third one I haven't heard back from yet, but from two. And the one, one of them is the Gilson Land Survey. They're in Waterbury. And her cost to do what we, you know, we've sent out, you know, an RFP to do that work and also identify the flood, 500 and 100-year flood rate. Whole bunch of stuff that's maybe a little more complicated and we need to get into right now. But we can use, well, what I'd like to ask or propose, and from what we understand, all of the above, part of this $4,000 grant to cover the costs of the survey because it's part of the redesign and the water mitigation to the building, which is causing the problems that we're having in the basement and energy use and all that. But that coupled with also doing the, this program, from what we understand, would be, you know.
Fits within the parameters of that capacity.
Okay.
So.
So what was the RFP for the survey? Did you get that back? What was the cost of that?
The cost of that, I have, I'm gonna send everybody the proposal when I get home tonight. But that's $2,500.
Okay, so you got $1,500 per year.
So, you know, we're, we're pretty confident that we could cover, yeah, it's 25. And she outlines her whole scope of work, which was identified with the architect and the civil engineer of what the work needed to bid. We had another bid that was 4,000, and if the guy ever do another piece, he was gonna be in the 5,000 range. So that's my, that's the story on that. And it would really, it'd be great to go ahead and know that we could go ahead with that because the sooner we can get the survey going, the sooner we can get some of these design decisions made and keep trucking to be ready for the late fall, early winter grants, because we have the. And I always get this wrong. What's the library grant? How's that? The library, what's?
I think it's called Capital Grant Program, but it's two different pots of money. One's ARBA and one's housing, urban development or something like that.
Yeah, but it's for libraries.
When's the next meeting?
What's maybe and when's the next meeting?
When's our next meeting? Are we looking for an answer on this tonight?
I would love to get one tonight, but if we're feeling that we can't, um, I mean, it's just.
Until, yeah, I mean, until the survey work is completed, we're kind of at a standstill with the design.
I just didn't know if we can do it with one or two RFPs or do we have to have a third or is that?
Oh, three, no, you're saying three proposals?
Three proposals, right. Do we have to?
Well, we've sent, I've sent, I actually sent it out to four people.
Okay.
And two of them, one person came back and said he couldn't do it. The other person I haven't heard from, who is also a Waterbury engineer. And then the other two, you know, I've gotten quotes from.
Can we do them separate? Can we do them separate and just give you the 25 for the topographic survey right now?
Oh, you're talking about the?
The energy fair piece, yeah. Oh, you don't need to decide on that right now, right?
Oh, well, I think we know, not really, but how we want to present, when we go to, um, as I understand, when we go to apply, you know, for the grant, for spending the grant, we need to demonstrate what we're doing and how we're hitting, you know, what we're doing to, spending that money.
That's not gonna do it.
And when Sam was talking to us about utilizing this capacity grant that we already have, she was just suggesting that the survey work fits within the parameters, but if we could combine it with some energy outreach, like what Dara was interested in doing, that that would be.
Kind of tie it in with the energy piece as well.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Okay, then, motion?
Can I make a motion?
Sure. All right, then I make a motion, we take the $4,000 energy survey grant and use it for our topographic survey as well as an energy fair and, uh, the energy fair at the town hall.
Maybe you want to call it an event, just because.
Yeah, okay. Event, yeah, energy event.
Energy event, or yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
At the town hall, are the dates to be determined?
Well, we're trying to do that for 10/14, actually, is when we're trying to have this event, the town hall event.
Then amended to say an energy event at the town hall on October 14, 2023. I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, well, I'll follow up with the information about the conservative and stuff.
Yeah, great.
Get help, Becky, to get, to get an honor.
Yeah, we need that. We need the value of Gilson.
Right.
Now, it seems reasonable.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got my boxes out there too, so.
You want me to keep going with another thing that I have?
Sure.
So I send you all this road, the committee, the road safety.
Yeah, road safety thing?
Our road safety committee, that's our name. We now have four different names. I think we've settled on this.
Yeah, I think road safety.
And so with several of the folks on this committee made a lot of joy, and then Tom, Jim, and our constable. We wrote this letter based on a, on how the, a letter to, that comes to the select board. And then we, the select board, we send it out to the Vermont Traffic Committee. There's a whole, and they had, it was a lot of pages. There was the Route 2. There was the Route 2, part of slowing traffic down, there's the Route 100B and through the village, all the way to Route 100. And then the last page is a, is a detail on how we plan to do it. How do we submit it to the state? And then the state holds a hearing, a public hearing, where they do a study, and then they do a public hearing. So what I'd like to do is do the first step, and, you know, maybe everybody can, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, or, you know, a little nighttime reading tonight or something.
Okay.
But what I was hoping to do, and I think I could still do it if you, is that we're gonna have a table at Morfest.
Okay.
And with Tom Shanat and some of the other members. And trying to get some signatures, because there's gonna be like a signature page of people to support, that people, you know, in the Motown, and especially on Route 2 or on 100B, or in the village, you know, can sign.
Okay.
So my hope is is to be able to start that process, you know, at Morfest. You know, people, we're gonna, Tom's daughter, our 10-year-old daughter's gonna make a little poster, you know, on the table. And John will be over there at some point when he finishes eating his cookies. A few of our other members.
His old chill town.
Frontier Town. We'll be chatting, you know, we'll be chatting it up a bit, and we're trying to get some signatures, you know. And also talking about some of the other things.
Frontier Town?
Frontier Town?
Oh, yeah.
So we'll be there, and we're both talking about this, and as well as some of the other stuff we've been working on or trying to work on. One of the things on our agenda to work on is speed on some of the dirt roads. You know, like for instance, by your, obviously, you know, the loop on ours, it goes to 50. Perfect.
Getting the bikers away.
They can't be down.
The bikers and the dollars.
Anyways.
Now, so you're gonna have both petitions, right?
Yeah, both letters, I would call them.
Both letters, right.
Yeah, both, yeah, at, at the, at the Morfest.
Okay, right.
I mean, to show people, or maybe they could go, they could take a minute to read it there, or they can say, we can email it to them to read, or, you know.
Page or whatever, and then just say, you know, we can either email it or read it.
My hope was for the, for the Route 2, one was descended to Jennifer Durin, the head of the Gallagher Acres Association. And the other two women who came, the families that came in here for the school study for the sidewalk. I bought their emails, they've sent them to Sasha, they've sent them to me. So I was gonna reach out to them to get, you know, that neighborhood viewing it and signing it. You know, it's gonna be a little while before we, you know, submit it. Because I think it'll, I think personally it'll have more legs if there's a lot of people.
I think that's correct.
You know. So that's my spiel on that.
Okay, I, I noticed.
Yeah, and if you want, we lost a midpoint, yeah, sure. And if you want, you can email me something you want, or call me up, or whatever.
Well, I think, I think if this is gonna be at Morfest, you know, we should approve it.
Okay, but we could, right, but if you had, if anybody here gets a chance to read it tonight, or tomorrow, and, you know, please call me up or email me and say, hey, here's a sentence that's either wrong, or you ought to change, or whatever, you know. We've done that with a few people. I mean, on the committee.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion that it took.
Yes.
Yeah, we might as well give it a shot.
I honestly didn't review that one, so.
Okay, well, maybe later tonight or tomorrow.
I certainly will review.
Maybe have coffee tomorrow morning.
And I'm willing to make a motion, you know, on a general thing, if we approve you presenting.
All right, so Route 100B north, change the speed limit to 35 miles per hour before the intersection of Routes 100 and 100B. And then drop to 30 before Campbell's Hump View Farm. Okay. I, I believe that should be on Route 100.
On Route 100?
Should be Route 100 north, Route 100 north.
Yeah, 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 and then change to 100B north.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I see that, you're right. Because it says it down here, but as a title right there, it's not clear.
Right, and then, and that's good. And then it says, from Campbell's Hump View Farm, northbound speed changes should mirror the southbound changes described. So these changes are north?
Yeah, no, no, it's, that's backwards.
This is, this is.
Good, good, up, good, 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 yeah, I see that.
So you're proposing to drop it to 40 before the intersection?
No, right now it is 40.
It is 40, it would be 35.
And people go into that section 40 plus.
Oh, okay.
And we were trying to say, can you drop it to 35 before the intersection, which is just past the farm?
It's just past the farm.
Not, not Campbell's Hump View Farm, the next one.
And that way, that way, if somebody does run the stop sign.
What?
That way, if somebody runs the stop sign at 100, under 100B, then they're only going 35 technically, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough little place to.
It is a tough area.
Someday, I don't know if any of us will be around to see it, but I would think that someday they're gonna put a rotary there or something.
Where do they change?
They won't put a traffic.
Where does it change to 40? By the Campbell's?
Well, no, if you were driving to Waysfield from here, you go 30 through the village, and you come through, over the bridge, and you go through, past Freeman Hill Road, and it actually changes to 40 there.
40, yeah, 40, just past.
Yeah, and then it goes up the hill, then 40 through the intersection.
Yeah.
Always Jerry and.
So just with that change, I think that sounds fine.
Now, if you say, where you say matching the other one, okay. I mean, you can't do that, because from Campbell's Hump View Farm, it's already 30. Okay, and you can't go up to 35 and 40.
Oh, no, 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 it would be 30.
Well, that's not what it says here.
It says 35.
It said to match the changes.
Before the intersection and then drop it to 30 before Campbell's Hump View Farm.
No, 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 the second one.
From Campbell's. Self-change should mirror the self. Oh, okay, so this should be clear, okay. So it should say the 30 to the, to the right, yeah. To say after Campbell's Hump View Farm.
If we're asking for 30 before Campbell's Hump View.
Yeah.
Okay, then I think that through the curves, we should request even lower than 30.
Yeah, I don't know.
If we do that, then we have to maintain the road.
Yeah, that's true, when you go to 25, the state, the town's responsibility.
Oh, okay. Can we get the town?
But you're saying just the curves, the way we have it now.
Yeah, because that's not, that's recommended.
Right, can we get the state to chip in on the signs, to say, you know, to put those little yellow?
No, no, the state does, they do that.
For recommended.
Make the recommended speed.
So for the orange sign, not the white?
The orange sign, not the white.
Okay.
Yeah, the warning sign, suggest.
Curve as a bridge to.
Speed.
25 for the curve of the bridge.
To be low.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's tough going down that hill, I'll tell you.
No, but that's great, and it's a suggestion.
Yeah, 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 no. You go to this.
Perfect, there's a real reason we're telling you to slow down, because it's dangerous.
Right.
Okay, well, make those changes and, and.
Great.
Why is there a cemetery? No, 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 but what was, what was that?
I think.
So can we make a general motion that if we accept it to be at Morfest, with the changes proposed, or do we have to wait for it?
No, I can make those changes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be, but.
For our next meeting or?
What, what you have here is the committee presenting something to the select board.
Exactly.
Okay, and so bottom line is, we have, we have to approve it.
Right.
If you're gonna display it on Saturday, we have to.
Right.
Right now.
Right, that's what I said, yeah.
Yeah, I was just reading, yeah. Request for such a study need to come from the town select board, it should be sent to, that's to Ian, to Dykes. The operations and safety bureau. So anyways, that's what we, yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve these slowing traffic letters for Route 200 and Route 100B. State traffic or whatever, operations and safety bureau. With, oh yeah, with, after, after signatures from residents of the town.
Except there?
Any more discussion on that? If anybody sees anything glaring.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I'll go back and read it tonight.
Would you please go over that tomorrow?
Definitely, throw a red flag up before Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Try to do it by, try to do it by Thursday, I don't, try to do it by Thursday, so I can make the change.
I'll do it tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, my last thing.
Oh.
Yeah, no, I have one last thing, everybody, I, I went. I finally have to biking by, the town minute, the end opponent, the beginning, right?
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
The folks there, I did stop laughing, I finally spotted someone there, talked to a gentleman. And he, I asked him, please come to a meeting with his partner. And they, he's, he said that he's spoken with the sheriff, the sheriff has come there to talk to him. And they went over where the weary parks occasionally, and the sheriff told him, you know, as long as you're this side of the mailbox, it's okay. I said, yeah, I hear you, but it's really tough for a lot of, you know, the neighbors, or. He goes, and he goes, no, I understand it, we're trying to, you know, work it out. He goes, it knows in the winter that they absolutely can't park there, because of, you know, plowing and snowing. And I was thinking about it after I saw him last night, actually, I was going back again, seeing if he could somehow, weary parks, if he could get, do some work on the land right there, so that he could get more of this, you know, he's, the road comes down like that. Right. They're kinda like right here, and he could get over this way more. Anyways, they, they know about it, they're, they're trying, and I thought maybe they would come to tonight's meeting, but maybe it was too short, but I'm hoping they'll come to the next meeting so that we can all chat with them. And they also wanna talk to, ask us about, because, and I said, yeah, you should definitely come and talk to the board, because there's a street light, like, right across from there, right across from them. And their land sits up, and the street light's there, and it's like just, I don't know when these folks moved in there, but they said it's just dry, it's absolutely unbearable. Because one, it affects the stuff they grow, because there's a light on, and one affects the stuff that they're growing, does that light?
What stuff?
You know, no, no, I, I, I don't know, that's what he said, you know, food and vegetables and whatever they grow.
I thought you meant a stoplight.
No, no. And it also shines right into their house, so at night, it's really, you know. And, you know, and I go, oh my gosh, I never really even noticed the streetlights, you know. None of them.
Yeah, I never noticed them, right.
So maybe there is something. No, we don't have streetlights where we live. Life by walks, but maybe there's some kind of.
Bathroom or something, are the streetlights a state thing?
They probably have some there.
Are they state or town?
It would be state, because it's, I think it's a state, right?
I mean, the state puts the streetlights in?
We didn't put it in. It's just, I said, I said, if you don't ask, then you don't know, you know. I said, I'll bring it up, but I don't know how we, you know, where we go from there, but. Anyways, they might come in, they're aware of the problem, they're trying to do their best. They did go over with the sheriff, and I said, well, so.
Well, that, that, I mean, we, we, already, didn't we find out to them that that is not correct?
Yes.
The sheriff's.
The sheriff, the sheriff has no jurisdiction there.
Okay.
It's a town right of way.
Okay.
They are clearly parking in a town right of way, and, you know, fine, I hope they do come in.
No, no, they.
Bottom line is, it's just a matter of convenience for that, there's plenty, there's room for four vehicles up there.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, I can see what they say, they all leave for work at different times, so they're trying to come over the vehicles. Okay, well, at least first step is I talked to them, they are gonna come in, and I'll stop again, because then I'll say, okay, just do it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for your time.
You know, they seem nice, they're reading Morfest, so if I recognize them, I can. Maybe you don't want to come to.
Have a side of this?
Yeah, well, I planned it, people, you know, it's, for sure. And that's it?
That's it for you?
That's it, basically, yeah.
Okay, Callie?
So I don't know what we did last year when this happened, but there has been a vehicle parked in the middle of Lynch Hill for about a month. Like, right in the road. People are going around it. It's not a local person, we have no idea who it was. They basically went up there, it died, and they left it there.
Does it have plates on it?
I don't know. So I haven't seen it, I've just heard from multiple people that it's up there. People are going around it, which is starting to make a road around it. I'm really surprised people haven't smashed the windows out and stolen stuff. It is a diesel, it's got a programmer in it, so I'm really surprised that no one's stolen anything out of it. So I don't know what we did the last time that happened, if we actually had it. Something towed, because there was a vehicle up there last year that sat for like three weeks, but this is probably.
Did we send the state police there or something?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, Tom Shanat.
That one, I think we should.
Find out who, who it belongs to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't found out who it is.
Well, do you, plates are.
They are, they are.
Or we can get the police, right, or sheriff.
Well, it's not the place that the vehicle, the VIN number, it's gonna be registered somewhere, so.
That's how it would stay.
How can someone just?
I mean.
How do they leave a vehicle?
What's our legal, what legal right do we have to tell them? We, we have to post it in the right way? In the right way, can you tell it to anybody, right, like a tractor do it or whatever? No, it's just the expensive, they have a tow, that's all. Well, at least if we had a tow gun on the right way.
Uh-uh, I mean, they're almost gonna tow it out right away, if they're coming out of there, they're gonna tow it out of there.
Tow it all the way down, right.
They're gonna tow it, and they're probably gonna impact it.
Yeah.
Which is what I would say. But it is not a local person, like, nobody around knows who it is. So.
All right, well, I think we should look into it, I'm not even happy.
Because Stefan's been up there.
What?
So if Stefan's been up there and had something identifying on it, I'm sure he would have.
Yeah.
Grabbed it. So I have a feeling they swiped the plates and the bins off, I mean, the bins on the inside of the door.
On the door, right.
And it's locked.
That's why.
Right, it's probably unreadable or whatever, right?
Well, I'd say we make every effort to notify the owner and have it accounted. It's gonna cost a hundred bucks or something.
Will they have to pay for it, huh?
Yeah, they have to pay.
Maybe just maybe get the snowplow out there and just plow it off the road.
No, just have it accounted.
No, just.
I mean, at this point, it's affecting, the people are going around it to use.
It's, it's. It's a vehicle blocking the public right away, if it was sitting in the road right out there, we'd have it calmed the next day. So I think that's what we should do.
So I don't mind reaching out to Tom and saying, hey, it's up here.
Yeah, well, I mean, that would be the first step, and then Tom would probably have to maybe call the sheriff or the state police, I guess, right?
Yeah, whatever you need to do, I would say, you know. I'd have more than one to help, that's our side of the hell, I mean, if I, you want me to make a phone call to anybody, or go lead somebody up there and say, here's a car, that's not a big thing for me. I'd say, don't, why wait? It's been there a month, I would...
Drop them all on the road. Well, Tom, yes, Tom would be a good first.
Because next thing you know, it's going to be winter, and then it's going to be stuck there all winter, you know?
I don't want that, you know? We don't want that.
How far up is it?
I don't know, I haven't been up there.
Oh, okay, I'll check it out.
Yeah, I haven't been up there.
All right, let me know if I can help. I certainly will, I'll know if I can help on that one.
So, I mean, it's just, if we're talking, we're talking about opening up the roads to ATVs, and it's, it's stuff like this from the people who don't live in the area.
Yeah, that ruins for...
Right, right, and it's not even an ATV, it's a vehicle.
Yeah, that one, I know. It's a right wing vehicle. Oh, you haven't done a stop?
Uh, it's, I don't think it's super old. I don't think. It's either GMC or Chevy, because it's Germanized. But I'm really surprised nobody has stolen anything off it. Brings and tires are on there, the windows aren't smashed out. So, which I'm really surprised.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Especially for it being in the middle of the road.
Okay.
So I will, I'll reach out to Tom.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's probably in your best interest that somebody does tow it out of there, and before it does get destroyed, because... If the town guy doesn't get a decent car at that point, nobody stays it up.
Okay. Anything, anything more, Kelly, on the camping on Route 2?
The only person that I found to contact for was at National Resources, and that was more just picking up trash.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't the camps themselves. But I did finally notice the one right off River Road.
Yeah.
Because I don't usually come that way, and luckily we went by a couple days, and I was like, oh wow, they've really got a setup there.
They have like an open close sign, too. It's like, I said, oh, they're giving massages on your cup.
Okay.
You have that kid from the area?
Yeah, because Tom said he had not heard back from Dara on that, and said he will call again. Five more, I tried to count them today, but I don't think there are...
I'd say maybe a total of five, ten?
Yeah, yeah.
But not five more. I didn't have it up in the last few days, but there was, it was a good, it was expanding into the woodwork, as opposed, it was like one primary going kind of right on the outskirts, and then...
Right, the big square one?
Yeah, kind of moving their way back or whatever.
Is there still someone on the beginning of River Road?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that past the...
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
So what were we going to do about that situation?
Which one, the River Road?
The road, yeah.
Tom was actually calling the SP. I don't know how it came out, but he worked it.
Okay.
They're having us, we won't pick up there.
Well, Route 2, we can't really move anything out, right?
No, it's state property.
Okay, Robbins, Jeff?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's approve the minutes, Tim.
I want to make a motion to approve the select board, and it says August 21st, 2023.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And, let's see, the only thing I had was on the cemetery. So this has nothing to do with the accident?
Uh, I think Sharon was just giving you that information, because the LCT said that the town isn't liable or doesn't own, had a...
Right, right.
I think a front porch forum came out that they found the driver.
Oh, they did?
So it was going out to the...
Oh, okay.
The phone book.
Oh, okay.
What happened?
Uh, it was an accident, somebody drove to the cemetery, and the building was a cemetery.
Up here, the cars come, go too fast.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And it went actually into the cemetery.
Yep, and it's damaged some of the linements, and, um, and then they left the scene. So they tracked them down, so that...
That's what I heard.
We're, we're assuming that this person's going to pay for it?
Is that what that is, a quote difference?
Yeah, that's what it's like, yeah.
It's what's in their accounts for the cemetery.
It's what?
It's what's in the accounts for the cemetery.
Oh, if they were, if they were to repair that.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
If they were, decided that the town was liable, and they needed to repair it, and that's the funds they would need to use. But if we're not liable, why would we not assume responsibility and release? These are funds that we have.
These are, yeah, these are cemetery funds.
Oh, right. I guess...
So if the driver doesn't have insurance, and we want to help them cover it, we want to help them in a way, would that be something that the town's insurance would be able to cover, though?
That's supposed to stand out, but town's insurance does not cover health costs.
Okay, because we're not liable. Okay.
So which is the, which is the village?
Oh, these are just the, these are the four houses the cemetery has. They have two CDs that are...
Oh, okay, okay.
And then they have those two available funds.
Okay.
That's funds that they have available.
Right, yeah.
If we decide that we want it.
Okay. So that's seventy-two thousand. All right, well, I guess...
How many monuments were destroyed, or we don't know?
So let's move on to old business. And we have the easements to deal with, okay?
They're still being...
I saw, okay, oh, I saw...
They were given, Tom got it, that one to Helen Brown, and I had not heard back from Helen's attorney.
Okay.
And then, so the other ones still, my brothers were...
Well, the other, the other one...
Sharon came across something today, too, that might void the whole thing.
No.
The wording notes on that?
Uh, no, because it's, that was for water lines. These aren't water lines. I mean, that's what, that's what Nick responded with, that they were for water lines.
Okay.
So at any rate, I took a look at it, it looks pretty good. So these are the easements.
Right.
For the church and for Helen Brown.
Eclair.
Eclair.
Eclair?
Yes, Eclair, sir. And I know there's a progress meeting of the, um, stormwater committee on Thursday morning.
That's, that's what, that's what they got to do out there?
Yeah.
Well, ensure they're working hard.
Yeah, Thursday morning, it's, uh...
Ensure they're working hard to get ready for more tests to be cleaned up out there.
Yeah.
They're already working out there.
No, unfortunately, they can't, they can't do much, though, because of the easements. I don't know, I don't know what they're doing here, so, I don't know, Thursday. Okay, anybody else have any old business? New business? Okay. Little sign away.
Was it a good trip?
Oh, yeah.
Looking for a chat with you.
How's Ray doing with all the FEMA guys? Anybody heard from Ray about FEMA people?
No.
What's working there? Busy.
I already signed. That's what I signed last week.
Which one's that?
The one.
No.
Well, I had signed the checks.
This one has four, whatever, break that.
Oh, remember I can't just sign, there was that I signed the front page of that, I guess.
Oh, this, this one?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That was last week.
Yeah. They did that, we got one here, I'm sure, that one for it.
Is there a square word there?
Yeah, that's mine. Down on the paper, where else? Over here. Can't steer away, look at that. What's that, at least you don't look like me now. See yourself, huh? Just got the doctor earlier down here.
I know.
So much for those long summer days. Wish we'd say someone to the cemetery. Boy, I was brutal today.
Yeah, it's supposed to be that tomorrow and Thursday, they have a heated fire, you know?
I know. I was out there for like five hours.
Ooh.
I was like dying.
I did that yesterday, and then today.
Pushing a damn push mower. My trailer broke, so I couldn't do it with my tractor.
This one, this freaking lawn, I signed it, yeah, I signed it last week or something. Yeah, you signed it last week?
Oh, yeah, because, yeah.
I did three of those yesterday.
Oh, yeah. So when do you compete with some of those things?
Well, I did one.
It was brutal yesterday.
I did one, one up.
What is?
Stacked it, came back down, did another one, and backup started stacking. I didn't have one load the third one, because I must have looked terrible. The nick was like just like a hailway there. So I got to stand in the door.
Oh. But I mean, everywhere, I had to aid out people.
Oh, you had hay, right?
Yeah, I worked for them.
Yeah, and everywhere you go, I mean, the people are just trying to get those fields cut. I mean, it's been wet all summer, you know? Get all hay out, you know?
I mean, he doesn't have, like, big up barely any first cut.
Yeah.
First cut was like...
First cut from, yeah. I know, I know. I've been reading about...
I think the first cut was just to try to make the second cut grow, like...
He'd be decent in that comment.
Some of these places don't, yeah, they don't have enough, they don't have enough hay.
I don't know what they're like, Scrivener Farm, I mean, they lost fifty percent of what they know of the corn.
That's not Scrivners, that's D'First.
Oh, D'First, I don't know that, that's not...
That's D'First.
Where, wherever you're...
Yeah, no, they were, yesterday, they were crazy, they were...
The Barrel's House is fine in dawn, but then right there, excavator took it down, chunk by chunk, every freaking thing they had. It's horrible.
Yeah, you have to be careful when you do that.
What's that?
You have to be careful when you do that.
When they get rid of everything, right? Oh, yeah, well, they did a pretty good job.
Well, that's the house.
I mean, they separated all of that all in this time, so...
They have to be checked for asbestos to go after a certain time.
Your entire belongings, just to watch the excavator.
That's the house, the one I'm...
Dressers in all of this.
I had to work something on the cars.
Yeah, they're brothers.
Yeah.
They're brothers.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I signed the catering permits for, for this farm, and then here's the fire contract for Waterbury and that field.
Now, the tech just does the bragging, too, just come on right now. This time of year is just the worst one, did you tell me? Snaps aren't so bad, it's the headaches.
Yeah, everything's...
Wow, real, real big time.
Golden Bron is unbelievable.
Yeah, that Golden Bron is just incredible, it's... Sign has had it to... All right.
Oh, she'll get it, Jer. Oh, she'll do it, Jer?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.